Good evening. This, the 56th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones and put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be provided by Reverend Cleveland Mason from Perkins Square Baptist Church.
Let us pray. Eternally gracious God, we humbly come today thanking you for all of the blessings and benefits of life that you have given to us. We come today lifting all of our leaders who come together to determine ways and means by which we can make our city better. We pray that you would breathe upon our city with your holy breath and cause us, oh God, to know your peace, to know your provision, and that all these endeavors will be handed over to men and women with wisdom who will for our city, make our city good. It is in your name we thank you for this blessing. Amen.
The clergy. To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The clerk will call the roll of members.
President Middleton, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark. Madam President, we have a quorum.
It is the council's custom to journalize the invocation. I ask for a motion to journalize the prayer. So moved by Councilman Dorsey and seconded by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of journalizing the invocation, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. On the members' desks is a letter regarding the appointment of Mr. Charles Jackson as Chief Clerk of the City Council. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Madam President, the Journal of the Proceedings from the March 25th City Council Meeting is on the council members' desks.
Is there a motion to approve the journal?
So moved.
So moved by Councilwoman Clark and seconded by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of adopting the journal, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries and the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the ex officio mayor. Bill signed by the ex officio mayor can be found on page two of the agenda. Bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill 190362, City Streets Opening: A Variable Width Alley Located Between Two Ten-Foot Alleys Bound by Boone Street, East 22nd Street, Greenmount Avenue, and East 23rd Street. For the purpose of condemning and opening a variable width alley located between two ten-foot alleys bounded by Boone Street, East 22nd Street, Greenmount Avenue, and East 23rd Street, as shown on Platte 284-A-15 in the office of the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 190363, City Streets Closing: A Variable Width Alley Located Between Two Ten-Foot Alleys Bound by Boone Street, East 22nd Street, Greenmount Avenue, and East 23rd Street. For the purpose of condemning and closing a variable width alley located between two ten-foot alleys bounded by Boone Street, East 22nd Street, Greenmount Avenue, and East 23rd Street, as shown on Platte 284-A-15A in the office of the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 190364, Sale of Property: Former Bed of a Variable Width Alley Located Between Two Ten-Foot Alleys Bound by Boone Street, East 22nd Street, Greenmount Avenue, and East 23rd Street. For the purpose of authorizing the mayor and City Council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in a certain parcel of land known as the former bed of a variable width alley located between two ten-foot alleys bounded by Boone Street, East 22nd Street, Greenmount Avenue, and East 23rd Street, and no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 190365, City Property: Renaming the Shake 'n Bake Family Fund Center to the Glenn Doughty Shake 'n Bake Family Fund Center. For the purpose of changing the name of the Shake 'n Bake Family Fund Center located at 1601 Pennsylvania Avenue to the Glenn Doughty Shake 'n Bake Family Fund Center. Sponsors Costello, Burnett, Scott, Bullock, Cohen, Stokes, Henry, Pinkett, Schleifer, Reisinger, Middleton.
Yield to Councilman Costello. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a simple renaming of a city-owned facility. Madam President, you were with us last week at the Shake 'n Bake facility in Upton. It's to rename it after Glenn Doughty, better known as Shake 'n Bake, who was a pro football player who put money into that property to help establish that recreational facility for our youth in Upton. Thank you, Madam President.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee.
City Council Bill 190366, Commercial Parking Facilities Revision. For the purpose of making certain revisions to the city's ordinances regarding parking facilities, clarifying the application of the subtitle as it relates to commercial parking facilities, requiring that commercial parking facilities provide customers with proof of payment, prohibiting certain commercial parking facilities from removing motor vehicles without the owner's consent, increasing certain fines, conforming and clarifying related provisions, and generally related to the regulation of commercial parking facilities. Sponsors Dorsey, Clark, Scott, Costello, Cohen, Henry, Snead, Schleifer, Bullock, Middleton.
Add Councilman Pinkett, Councilman Reisinger, Councilman Stokes. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Madam President. I have the privilege of representing this body on the city's trespass towing board where I have the interesting experience of receiving a lot of complaints about cars getting towed all around the city. And I received one not too long ago where an individual had been towed and said, "Well, I thought that I paid the right amount to park at that lot in that old 1950s-style box where you fold up your money and you slide it in there." And then it turned out that she hadn't paid the right amount and got towed. And she said, "Well, I would have never been confused about it if I'd have been able to get a receipt." And so that seemed reasonable. And we polled all of the companies doing trespass towing business in Baltimore City and found that there were only two of these boxes left in the whole city. And so it seemed reasonable, especially considering that the Parking Authority of Baltimore City can receive both credit card and cash payments and is moving in the direction of app usage for these payments for parking lots, that we've set an example as a city, and I think it's time in 2019 that we asked others to follow along. In the process of looking into this particular case as well, I found that that particular lot also was out of compliance, that they had no license to be operating as a commercial parking facility in the first place, but that between the laws around trespass towing as well as the laws around commercial parking lot operation, that there was a gap where there's nothing to make it unlawful to tow a car from a lot that's not licensed to be operating in the first place. So that's the other thing that this bill does, is it just says that if you are holding yourself out there as a commercial parking lot and you're doing so without a license to do that, then you also cannot have cars towed from your lot. And if you do, we're going to penalize you, the parking lot owner, for allowing that to happen. So I thank everybody for their support on this bill. Thank you, Madam President.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 190367, Resoning: 129 and 131 South Schroeder Street. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the properties known as 129 and 131 South Schroeder Street, as outlined and read on the accompanying platte from the R8 zoning district to the C2 zoning district. Sponsors Bullock.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 190368, Resoning: 1141 Poplar Grove Street. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 1141 Poplar Grove Street, as outlined and read on the accompanying platte from the R6 zoning district to the C1 zoning district. Sponsor Bullock.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 190369, Resoning: 2908 Belmont Avenue. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 2908 Belmont Avenue, as outlined and read on the accompanying platte from the R6 zoning district to the C1 zoning district. Sponsor Bullock.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 190370, Zoning: Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District. Variance is 1326 West Pratt Street. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district on the property known as 1326 West Pratt Street, as outlined and read on the accompanying platte, and granting variances from certain bulk and off-street parking regulations. Sponsor Bullock.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 190371, Zoning: Conditional Use Banquet Hall, 4339 York Road, a portion of the property known as 4335 to 4339 York Road. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a banquet hall on the property formerly known as 4339 York Road, which is now a portion of the property known as 4335 to 4339 York Road, as outlined and read on the accompanying platte, and making this ordinance subject to a certain contingency. Sponsor Henry.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 190372, Zoning: Fells Point Height Overlay District. For the purpose of establishing a new Fells Point Height Overlay District specifying height limits allowed in certain areas of the district, providing that the regulations of the underlying zoning districts apply, and generally specifying the regulation of properties within the overlay district. Sponsor Cohen.
Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This legislation would create a height overlay in the historic Fells Point neighborhood. It has been championed by all of the community associations in Fells Point. It took an extraordinary amount of work by some community leaders who worked together and got what I think is a really strong piece of legislation that recognizes the need for increased development, but also limits heights in order to protect the historic nature of the district. And I look forward to our hearing and moving this forward.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. Resolutions to be introduced.
City Council Resolution 190147R, City Retiree on the Health Insurance Committee. For the purpose of placing a representative of the Baltimore City Retirees Association on the Health Insurance Committee. Sponsors Snead, Burnett, Scott, Bullock, Cohen, Henry, Pinkett, Dorsey, Clark, Stokes.
Chair recognizes...
Add Reisinger.
We'd like to add Councilman Reisinger. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Snead to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Schleifer is a co-sponsor.
And before you do that, we also like to add Councilman Schleyer.
Okay.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Snead.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to move to suspend the appropriate rules so that a City Council resolution can be heard from the floor.
Do I have a second by Councilwoman Clark? All those in favor of suspending the rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries. The rules are suspended.
Thank you, Madam President. Today we stand with the Retired Police Association to request an independent voice on the healthcare insurance committee. When the calls go up or when the calls go down or when plans are chosen, they don't have a voice. And they should have an opinion. The men and the women on the... The retired men and women of the police force have served our city and they should have a voice. And then with all of that, I think we all should be able to retire with dignity and have an opinion on what our healthcare calls should be moving forward. I plan to retire one day, and so I would clearly like to have a voice on what should happen to me in the future, if I get to live that long. So, thank you, colleagues, for supporting this resolution.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Snead.
I move this resolution forward.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 19-0145R, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries and this resolution is adopted.
City Council Resolution 190148R, Informational Hea...
Just back that up. All those in favor of adopting the resolution, it's 19-0147R, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries and this resolution is adopted.
City Council Resolution 190148R, Informational Hearing: Mold in Housing. For the purpose of inviting the Commissioner of the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of Baltimore City, and the Health Commissioner, and the Secretary of the Maryland Department of Health or his designee to appear before the City Council to discuss the potential dangers of mold in housing. Sponsors Henry, Burnett, Scott, Bullock, Cohen, Pinkett, Snead, Schleifer, Dorsey, Clark, Reisinger, Middleton, Stokes.
This has been assigned to the Housing and...
Identify as a co-sponsor, Costello.
Identify as a co-sponsor, Councilman Costello.
Recognize Henry.
And I recognize Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, it's been a minute. Okay. Thank you all. First of all, I want to thank my colleagues for making this unanimous cosponsorship. I think that's a fairly good example of how important of an issue this is. Some of you, hopefully many of you, have seen the article in today's Sun that chronicles some particular anecdotes of dangerous issues with mold in rental housing. This is an issue that we discussed on the periphery of last year's legislation to create a rental inspection and licensure program. I think that it's important that the council educate itself very fully to the complexities of this issue before we look into exactly how we would try to regulate it. And so I look forward to working with the Chair of the Committee to put together a hearing that offers us as much information as possible. On your suggestion, we will be adding the Director of General, the Department of General Services to the panel. And we look forward to other experts from various advocacy groups and nonprofit organizations to provide additional information. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect timing, especially with all the rain we've been having. This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Resolution 190149R, Informational Hearing: Alternatives to Arrest. For the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore Police Department, the Baltimore City State's Attorney's Office, the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, and the Baltimore City Sheriff's Office, and other city officials responsible for enforcement, prosecution, and judicial review of criminal justice to appear before the City Council to discuss ways that we can rebuild trust between our citizens and the agents of the criminal justice system by exploring alternative enforcement strategies outside of traditional arrest. Sponsors Stokes, Burnett, Scott, Costello, Bullock, Cohen, Henry, Pinkett, Snead, Schleifer, Dorsey, Clark, Reisinger.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Madam President. Baltimore City has to look ways to decrease harm to citizens and improve relations between law enforcement and the community. In 2012, the General Assembly added more than 300 offenses which police officers may use to issue criminal citations. Recent data showed that 19,000 criminal citations were issued in the state of Maryland in 2018, but only 700 of those citations were in Baltimore City. That means, as a city, we are making more arrests for nonviolent misdemeanor crimes than necessary, for instance, laundering of open containers, placing a burden on local resources, and having citizens spend unnecessary time in jail waiting to be processed, and most of the arrests affecting African-Americans and minorities. The intent of the hearing is to dig deeper dive into the opportunities there are, to decrease an individual's time in jail while they are waiting for processing, to decrease the burden on law enforcement, to examine the barriers that stand in way for pursuing alternative measures. Thank you.
This has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee.
City Council Resolution 190150R, Investigative Hearing: Entities Receiving City Funds. Are they holding up their end of the bargain? For the purpose of inviting representatives of certain organizations located within Baltimore that both receive public funds from the city of Baltimore and lease any portion of their venue to the public for catered events, the Director of the Department of Finance, the Director of the Mayor's Office of Minority and Women-Owned Business Development, the President and CEO of the Baltimore Development Corporation, and other city officials responsible for the development and contracting of diversity in minority small businesses, and responsible for the achievement of the city MBE/WBE goals, and the representatives of the Baltimore minority hospitality and event industry to appear before the City Council to discuss the capital funding subsidies that the city of Baltimore has provided to certain organizations that lease any portion of their venue to the public for catered events, to discuss why some of these organizations utilize exclusive vendor lists without any minority business representation, to discuss the selection criteria, if any, for the creation of these exclusive lists, and to discuss what solutions, legislative or otherwise, can be implemented for the inclusion of MBE/WBE businesses on the exclusive lists. Sponsors Pinkett, Burnett, Scott, Bullocks, Cohen, Stokes, Henry, Snead, Schleifer, Dorsey, Middleton, Clark, Reisinger.
Chair recognizes Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Madam President. And I tried to win the contest for the longest narrative, it's not Michael. I want my prize at the end of the meeting. But it is imperative that we, as a city, make certain that minority-owned enterprises in the city's market area have full and fair opportunities to compete for its prime contracts, purchases, and associated subcontracts. That is especially important when the contracts are being led by entities that are receiving significant funds from the city's general and capital budgets. The city is a major funder to many cultural and other nonprofit institutions that, in addition to the services that they provide, also lease their space for a variety of events. While not all, many of these same entities require that renters select from exclusive lists for catering, audiovisual, floral, furniture, et cetera. These lists often have no MBE representation at all, or very minimal at best. While these MBEs are often companies that not only hire local, but also hire some of the hardest-to-employ in our community, the fact that they would be shut out of even participating in this lucrative market is unconscionable. This resolution calls for the business development agencies of the city to look at these practices to determine the depth of this concern and to make policy recommendations for its resolution. And thank you for the support.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee. You can find the consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? So moved by Councilman Scott and seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries and this calendar is approved. Okay. So, the Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Permission to extend floor privileges for my special guest.
A second for...
Second by Councilman Scott.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries.
First players, join me up front, as well as Cesar Romero from Beavio.
Okay. Thank you. I want to take this opportunity to recognize the incredible Patterson High School Clippers, the team that won the Maryland State Championship. A few quick shout-outs. Marvin Price was named Player of the Year and has committed to Ohio University. Senior Gerard Mungo has committed to Millerville College for next year. And colleagues and Madam President, over the past three years, this team has maintained a GPA over 3.0. At a time when our city is struggling and the narrative about our young people is too often negative, this is a good news story about a team of young people who showed heart, hustle, and who won it all. Therefore, on behalf of City Council of Baltimore, I present to you this resolution. Be it hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Patterson High School basketball team in recognition of your achievements and winning your third state championship. The entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution. And I would ask that my colleagues come on up, if that's all right, for a quick picture. And would also appreciate if our ex officio mayor could join us as well.
Oh, he's definitely going to have to stand in the front.
Sure. How long are my shoes?
We actually have a real photographer here, don't we?
Oh, that's nice. Nice change.
Yes. So that means you have to smile.
Okay, so the right is to like and congratulate.
Look at mine.
All right, hair time.
So now...
Now you'll recognize it.
The Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to extend floor privilege to my special guest, ex officio Mayor Young.
Call for a second. Chair, call for a second.
Second by Costello.
Second by Costello. All those in favor extending floor privileges to our guests, say aye.
Our guests.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries and our guests may take the floor.
Is this the one? Thank you, Madam President. Thank you all for inviting me back into the house. Y'all know I love this house. But I'm here this evening to present something to someone who's been very dear to my heart, Liam Davis, if he could stand. Well, you know, Liam started off as a student intern, and I seen all the potential that this young man had. And I immediately told him, "We need to hire him, first out of college." And he have not disappoint me, not once. When I got the call from Director Porsho saying that, "Can I have some time? I can have some time?" Okay. Saying that she was considering...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you have a few minutes.
Thank you. That she was considering Liam for a position in her department. The selfishness in me was going to say no. But then I thought about the growth that it would have with him going over there to help this guy. help this council get some stuff moving, and knowing that it was a great increase in pay that I couldn't match. But Liam, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything that you have done to make my office shine. You went down there in that 11th district, and I think it was part of the second and the first, and you did a yeoman's job. People told me how detailed you was, which I already knew, and I really appreciate that. It's because of you that I got elected again. You know, I have one of the best staffs, I have to tell you all. I have one of the best staff in City Hall, and they know I love them. And I've already said that I'm not running for mayor, for those who think I am. I'm coming back to be president of this city council. So it's just a temporary, you know, little hiatus, whatever they want to call it, because I'm coming back, y'all, and I hope that y'all will welcome me back to these chambers. So I have this, what do they call it, a mayor's resolution or something? Where's my president resolutions at? City of Baltimore Certificate of Recognition. On behalf of the citizens of Baltimore, I'm pleased to present this certificate to Liam F. Davis. Is that Frank?
Francis.
Francis, okay. I like to get that out. In recognition of your eight years of dedicated service to the city of Baltimore, including four as Chief Clerk of the Baltimore City Council, over the course of your time in City Hall, you have demonstrated a tireless work ethic and a remarkable dedication to excellence. On behalf of the citizens of Baltimore, I commend you for all you have done for our city and wish you many, many more years of success. Presented this 15th day of April 2019, Bernard C. Jack Young, ex officio mayor.
Yes.
May I ask that all the council members come and be a part of this?
Do a couple of you guys and then...
Just a couple of council members.
And then all the members, then all the members can join.
Okay. We're gonna sit on the stage. We also work towards the center and moving closer. And we're all in here. This sounds ready? And we're all in here. Very good. Okay. We're just gonna take some time.
Oh, recognize Scott.
Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I make a motion to read short titles for the remainder of the meeting.
Okay, so... Second by Henry. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Short reader and short titles. We will now move to bills on second reader. Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 190240, Dr. Letitia Girassa, Commissioner, Baltimore City, Department of Health, District
Uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee held a hearing on March 27th. I move the nomination favorable.
Second from Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor confirming this nomination, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The nomination is confirmed. Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 190328, Urban Renewal, Hamilton Business Area Amendment.
Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee heard this bill on April 9th. That was sponsored by Councilman Dorsey. There are technical amendments on your desk. I move the amendments favorable.
Second from Councilman Dorsey. All those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. The bill is amended. Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Madam President. I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilman Dorsey. All those in favor of approving the bill, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. The bill is moved to third reader. Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 180277, Zoning, IMU Industrial Mix Use Zoning Districts.
Chair recognizes, Chair Reisinger.
Thank you, Madam President. This bill has amendments. They're on my colleague's desk. I move the amendments.
Second from Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. This bill is amended.
Madam President, I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 180305, Resoning Certain Properties in the Harwood Community.
Chair recognizes Chair Reisinger.
Madam President, I move the bill favorable.
Second from Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 190321, Zoning Modifications to Approved Final Development Plan.
Chair recognizes Chair Reisinger.
Madam President, this bill has amendments. They're on my colleague's desk. I move the amendments.
A second from Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. The bill is amended.
Madam President, I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second from Councilman Henry. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The bill is approved. This motion moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 180345, Resoning 1401 Woodall Street and 1446 Stevenson Street.
Chair recognizes Chair Reisinger.
Madam President, I move the finding of facts.
Second from Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving the findings of facts, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. The findings are adopted. Chair recognizes Chair Reisinger.
Madam President, I move the bill favorable.
A second from Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 180293, Baltimore Tourism Improvement District Establishment. President Middleton, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 190324, Dockless Vehicles Regulation and Taxation.
I don't have it.
City Council Bill 180293, Baltimore Tourism Improvement District Establishment.
Chair recognizes Councilman Pinkett.
Madam President, there's a floor amendment on each member's desk. I'd like to make a motion to move the amendment.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of removing the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The amendment should be on the bottom page on your desk, the last amendment.
Yeah, it is.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Does the third reader amendment require a certain number of votes that would necessitate a roll call vote?
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
My understanding is that you only need that if you're trying to actually pass it on third reader, and since I don't see an enrolled copy of this, we're not trying to pass it on third reader tonight. So it'll be held over and the amended version would then pass at the next council meeting, or be offered at the next council meeting.
And in an abundance of caution, let's have a roll call vote on the amendment. Chair, did you have some? Okay. We're gonna do a roll call vote? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Yes, I think you've already determined, I was just saying it out loud, that I think a roll call is an abundance of caution and a good idea on the amendment, but as has been stated, we can't pass the bill on third reader, and so it will have to be held over until to come out as amended as a complete bill.
The bill will be held one meeting.
Exactly. Thank you.
Ready for roll call?
President Middleton?
Yes.
President Middleton, yes. Councilman Cohen? Councilman Cohen, yes. Councilman Scott? Councilman Scott, yes. Councilman Dorsey? Councilman Dorsey, yes. Councilman Henry? Councilman Henry, yes. Councilman Schleifer? Councilman Schleifer, yes. Councilman Pinkett? Councilman Pinkett, yes. Councilman Burnett is absent. Councilman Bullock? Councilman Bullock, yes. Councilman Reisinger? Councilman Reisinger, yes. Councilman Costello? Councilman Costello, yes. Councilman Stokes? Councilman Stokes, yes. Councilwoman Snead? Councilwoman Snead, yes. Councilwoman Clark? Councilwoman Clark, yes.
So I do, I say the amendments have been approved. The amendment has been approved for one meeting.
This amendment has been adopted.
Now you say this amendment has been adopted, and now you will say this bill will be held one meeting.
The amendments have been adopted and we will hold this bill for one meeting.
City Council Bill 190324, Dockless Vehicles Regulation and Taxation. President Middleton, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved. Bills withdrawn.
City Council Bill 190329, Repeal of Hamilton Business Area Urban Renewal Plan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Madam President, the request of members of the residents of the 3rd district, I make a motion to withdraw this bill from the bill file.
Second from Councilman Scott. All those in favor of withdrawing this bill, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. This bill is withdrawn. Committee announcements.
And we'll start on this side. Councilwoman Snead.
Yes, so the Labor Committee will...
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Snead.
Thank you, Madam President. The Labor Committee will hear Bill 19-0334 on Thursday, May 16th, 2019, at 1:00 PM. This is for the purpose of redefining employer for purposes of the laws governing unlawful employment practices.
Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Madam President. The Housing and Urban Affairs Committee will be holding a work and voting session on City Council Bill 180298, Ordnance Franchise OHP Gas Main through the lands of the mayor and city council of Baltimore. That will be on Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019, at 2:15 here in council chambers. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, May 29th, at 2:30 PM. This is for City Council Resolution 17-0003R, Third Quarter Projections for Fiscal Year 2019 and Budget Overview for Fiscal Year 2020. Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on that same day at 2:31 PM on Resolution 17-0004R, Budget Oversight Hearings for Baltimore City Public Schools, Third Quarter Projections for Fiscal 2019, and Budget Overview for Fiscal Year 20. That same day, Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing at 5:00 PM. That will be Baltimore City Council Taxpayers Night. Taxpayers Night provides the residents of Baltimore City the unique opportunity to share comments and concerns about our city's budget. And finally, Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Resolution 18-0091R, Budget Oversight Hearings for Baltimore City Police Department on Tuesday, April 30th, at 5:05 PM. Thank you, Madam President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Madam President, Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 19-0322 on Wednesday, May 22nd, at 1:00 PM in the council chambers. This is a rezoning at 1818 East Pratt Street. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill 19-0333 on Wednesday, May 22nd, at 1:05 PM in the council chambers. This is a rezoning at 801-803 North Chester Street. Thank you, Madam President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Madam President. The Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hold a hearing on City Council Bill 18-0307, Water Accountability and Equity Act, on Thursday, May 16th, 2019. This televised hearing will be at 5:00 PM. Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the appropriate rules to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the motion carries.
The Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear City Council Bill 19-0357, Fire and Police Employees Retirement System, Interest Service Credits, Death Benefits, Direct Deposit, and Technical Corrections on Thursday, April 25th, 2019, at 10:00 AM in the Clarence DuBurne's Council Chamber. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, on April 30th, here in the DuBurne's chambers at 5:00 PM, City Council Public Safety Committee will hold a hearing for Council Resolution 18-0092R, Monthly Council Stat Meeting with the Baltimore Police Department. On May 7th, at 4:00 PM, here in the council chambers, the Council Public Safety Committee will hold a legislative oversight for the purpose of having the Baltimore Police Commissioner and Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice and the State Attorney of Baltimore present to the Baltimore City Council on a deep breakdown of the disposition of gun violence cases in Baltimore. Thank you.
Thank you. Regular announcements. I would like all of us to wish Councilman Yitzi Schleifer a happy birthday. Councilman Slicer's birthday. Councilman Slicer's birthday is April 17th. Happy birthday, Councilman. Councilman Reisinger, I'd like to request a moment of silence for, first, Maurice Braxton, which is a longtime barber in Park Heights, passed away recently. And of course, we'd like a moment of silence for the Honorable Michael Bush, Speaker of the House of Delegates. We offer sincere condolences to the family and loved ones of the Honorable Michael E. Bush, Maryland Speaker of the House of Delegates, upon his unexpected passing. This is a sad time in our state of Maryland. We also offer our thoughts and prayers to the entire Maryland legislature, especially to the members of the House of Delegates, who are mourning the loss of the longest-serving speaker in the state. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, Madam President. Before we proceed to our final prayer, and thank you for expressing so many... Before we proceed to our final prayer and thank you for expressing so many of our sentiments with regard to the late speaker, a real friend of Baltimore. But I rise because I would like to congratulate you on being, it's so nice to see a woman in that chair and on- And on how wonderfully you've conducted your first official meeting.
Thank you.
I remember my own and it was not as peaceful and not as well done, but I've survived to see you here and be so proud of that. I'd also like to acknowledge the parents of our colleague, Councilman Schleifer, who are great Baltimoreans who have moved to Israel but come back to the past for the Passover season and to see their son on his birthday. Could I ask for a moment if they could stand to be recognized?
Chair recognizes the parents of Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you. And finally, Madam President, on your desk, we couldn't leave it empty, your official desk, and so in the tradition of then-Councilwoman Barbara A. McColsky, there is a flower there. It will not be there every week, but in her, in her first meeting of the city council as a newly-elected councilwoman, she planted a geranium in her spittoon. And all of Baltimore saw a picture of that and cheered on what was one of the first women, who was one of the first women ever to serve in the Baltimore City Council and certainly a model to us all. May you reign in her, in her legacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clark and all members. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I rise to ask that Council, Acting Council Vice President Rysinger honor a moment of silence for now 78 victims of homicide in Baltimore and all those that we've lost to the opioid crisis as well.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say to my colleague, Councilman Cohen, that Lauraville is greener than the Patterson Park neighborhood, that tie dye has never been gone and that Coco's absolutely has the best crab cake in Baltimore.
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise first on a sad occasion. I would also ask Councilman Rysinger to add the name Michael Marazidi to the list of folks that we will be doing a moment of silence for. Michael's a longtime resident and business proprietor in Fell's Point. For those of you familiar with his establishment, he opened and ran One-Eyed Mikes for a number of years and he will be tremendously missed. In hopefully happier news, I wanted to share a brief story. About a week or so after I, my wife and I brought our first child home from the hospital, I walked into the nursery and found my wife sitting in a rocking chair, rocking the baby quietly, and I said, you know, in a year and a half, we will have been married for 10 years. And she just kept rocking and then she looked at me and she said, let's get to nine. I shared, I shared that story with you, my friends. I shared that story because as of about 11 o'clock tomorrow morning, we will have been married for 25 years. And I wanted to take a moment and look directly into the camera on the off-chance that my wife ever bothers to actually look at one of these and say, thank you very, very, very much for staying with me for 25 years when a lot of it has been with these people. So, thank you and I just wanted to share.
Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Second to the passing of Mike Marazidi, also referred to as the mayor of Fell's Point, truly a good human being who put a ton of work into our city. Also want to correct my good friend, the gentleman from the third district. Jimmy's Seafood, as we all know, is the best crab cake in Baltimore. Patterson Park is the greenest neighborhood and I thought Lauraville was in Baltimore County, so I don't even know. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for Charles Steamboat Markowski, beloved member of the Locust Point community, very active with the International Longshoremen Association, who recently passed away. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I just want to moment of silence for a great friend of mine, Ralph Gilliam, who worked in the liquor bar for 20 years. He just passed away last week.
Adjournment, Chair recognizes Councilman Rysinger.
Madam President and colleagues, I just want for point of order and clarity that I am not the acting vice president, Ex-Officio. The next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, April 22nd at 5:00 PM in the council chambers. I would like to request a moment of silence, Madam President, for Michael Maraziti, the 78 homicide victims in the Baltimore City. Also for Maurice Braxton, Michael Bush, and also, who is a friend of mine that I knew for a number of years, Charles Markowski, Markowski, that we called Steamboat from Locust Point, and also Ralph Gilliam.
Thank you. There being no more further business, this concludes the 56th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council.